Thank all y'all for being here. This is the Prattville Planning Commission. And, Madam Secretary, could you call a roll for them?
Mayor Gillespie.
Here.
Councilman Bowles. Chairman Smith.
Here.
Vice Chair Gardner.
Here.
Chief Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Carpenter.
Here.
Mr. Hall.
Mr. McAlley.
Here.
And Mr. Nelson.
Here.
Okay, we do not have any minutes at this time, so I will go on into old business. We do have the rezoning B2, general business in R5, patio garden homes to R4. We're multi-family. Mr. McCallum, would you?
I would like to offer... Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer substitute motion that this rezoning proposal be removed from our agenda.
Okay. I believe we have to make a substitute motion to take the motion that is on the floor off, and so we have to agree to a substitute motion first. And we do have a second for that. We are agreeing to... That right now, we had a vote to whether or not to approve or not approve it, and we need to have a substitute motion because we have a motion on the floor to approve or not approve it. And so our substitute motion... We are voting to have a substitute motion. So all those in favor of a substitute motion signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. Now, can we have a substitute motion? What you just said.
Yes, substitute motion is that this be removed from our agenda.
In same second? In second from Mr. Gardner. All in favor of removing that from our agenda signify by raising your right hand.
Please both of you.
All right. It has been removed. It is not there. All right. Next one is number two, which is... Is it rezon? Would you like to read that in? Would you? Ms. Carpenter? We do have a public hearing. Do we want to say that first? We do have a public hearing, don't we? We have on the rezoning, from Forest Agriculture and Recreation to B2, general business, corner of Highway 2 West and Golson Road. This is a public hearing. Does anybody want to come and speak for or against the rezoning from Forestry, Agriculture and Recreation to General Business?
Tell us where... Can somebody tell us where it is?
You can come on in. Please tell us who you are with the secretary. Are you the position?
My name is Paige Lewis, and I represent the Broadway Group.
Okay.
We're actually the developers for this piece of land. I'm pretty much just here to answer any kind of questions you have, but we're just asking that you rezone the property to B2. We will have... We'll be building a retail store right here. The retail store will be 9,100 square feet. And just some general facts that might, you know, help. This particular store, it'll employ about seven to 10 full and part-time employees, and they employ all locals. So no outside people will come in to be managers or anything. It'll all be locals that'll be employed. They also generate about... For this size store, it'll be about 1 to 2 million a year, which that'll be great tax revenue for the city.
Mm-hmm.
That's pretty much it. I'm open for questions if you have any. That's just kind of generally what'll be going on.
Okay. Thank you. We might call you back up in just one second. Does anybody out here have any questions or want to address us? All right. Yes?
My guy, I'm a little late, but we discussed the property out there on Page 2.
We are.
Go for it.
Yes, sir, we are. And can you let the record show that Mr. Hall is present?
I got a pass.
Yes, that is it. Yes, we have moved from the first one that was withdrawn, and so we are on... We have the public hearing for the second one. All right, and the public hearing will be closed. Yes, sir.
I was going to speak over my head. I'm the landlord.
Okay, that's great. Come on up, and you can speak. Come on.
I'm Marvin Gentry. I own this land with my sister Evelyn Rhodes and my nephew Larry Gentry, and I'm just asking you all to approve the rezoning of this property so that we can move forward with this retail store.
Excellent. All right. Any questions for Mr. Gentry? Anything? Thank you, Mr. Gentry. Anybody else for or against or want to speak regarding this matter? We will close the public hearing. Mr. Duke?
We need to probably fill in a few blanks here, but...
Okay.
And I'll be glad to... Don't know if you want to put a...
No, we'll close it.
Yeah, I didn't know if you wanted to put the motion on the floor first.
Okay. Motion to close the public hearing?
Just a second.
Or do we just close it? Okay, we'll close it.
Read it into the meetings.
Oh, my bad. You're right. Thank you. You read it then, then? Thank you.
Resolution, rezoning request, FAR to B2, corner of Highway 82 West and Golson Road, the Broadway Group LLC petitioner, May 15, 2014. Whereas the Broadway Group LLC has placed the subject property under contract and applied for rezoning of the property described in Attachment A and shown in Attachment B, and whereas Larry R. Gentry, Evelyn Rhodes, and Marvin Gentry are the owners of the property, and whereas the property to be rezoned is located inside the city limits in the southeast corner of the intersection of Highway 82 West and Golson Road, and whereas the petitioner wishes to rezone the property from FAR, Forest Agriculture and Recreation, to B2, general business, and whereas a public hearing on the proposed zoning was held by the Prattville Planning Commission on May 15, 2014, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby recommends the rezoning of said property from FAR to B2. So moved.
Thank you. Second, third, and the second? Now.
Good afternoon. Let me go ahead and fill in a few items for the benefit of folks that may be catching this on the video later. This is a request for rezon two and a half acres located in the southeast corner of the intersection of Golson Road and US 82. The property is part of a larger tract, roughly 127 acres. Y'all have a copy of the larger location map that shows the property in reference to the city limits. Property as stated before is zoned FAR, as is the majority of the surrounding property in this area. Property is shown on the city's future land use plan as being low-density residential. The current zoning of FAR would fit that designation. Items for consideration before the board at this point when looking at zoning would be looking at consistency with the comprehensive plan, and secondly, looking at any potential impacts that this rezoning would have on growth in this area or the extension of commercial into this area. Make sure I'm very clear. I'm not saying that you should not approve this. I'm saying that you need to be aware that introduction of this zoning in the area where there's really no other commercial that's been zoned prior to this will probably lead to other requests coming before you and other changes to this area. The Broadway Group, the developer of this lot, and Mr. Gentry, we have talked with them about their... The overall plans for the larger 127 acres. Mr. Gentry says there are no plans at this point that he can offer, and you may want to ask those questions further as well. So I'd be glad to answer any questions at this point or wait till further in the discussion.
Any questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Hall.
Can I make a comment? Are we into that far enough?
Yes, sir.
That area out there is not too far from my neighborhood, and I know these folks, they've known them 40-something years. I don't know what they plan to put there, but anything they put there would be an improvement. If the City of Prattville and State of Alabama could get a US... Already... Excuse me. 82 auto parts, get parking out there on it right away, it would help it a lot. Anything known to them, I know is going to be nice, and I just urge you to take that into consideration. We've got to grow somewhere. Where else are we going to grow? If he's got 100-something acres out there wanting to turn into a big shopping center, I'd go along with that. Be glad to. Thank you.
I don't think there was a question there, so I was...
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I have a question.
In fact, I may just... Unless there are any other questions, we should just...
Are there any questions, Mr. Duke?
No, this time.
Okay.
I do have a question, Mr. Duke.
Yeah, I do. Mr. Gentry, I know in terms of comprehensive plan, we talked a little bit about this and probably not very extensively about Westward Road because too much of it's always been the other way. And I guess, you know, question to you and for us to consider is if we talked seriously about this, would we have thought, yeah, that's a pretty decent place for a little commercial node?
It's possible. If you were looking for... And this is similar to a discussion that we had concerning County Road 29 and Alabama Highway 14 south of this point, is that there are natural locations where there will be at some point a commercial node, and this is probably one of those. If you read the comments in the staff report, you'll know that this is kind of a major pathway to most of the residential that's opened up off of Golson Road and Indian Hills Road over the last decade. The density in this area is not high and not likely to increase simply because there's no sewer available currently, not expected to have sewer available in the near future. Topography doesn't lend itself to inexpensively developing higher density. So you're going to continue to see pretty low density in this area, but this is a pathway to those developments that are there. The primary driver for the comprehensive plan was looking at commercial uses and trying to limit their expansion at this point, not necessarily forever, but the city is heavily overbuilt or heavily geared toward commercial zoning, commercial buildings, and there was some idea to keep that kind of, at this point, closer in. So I think I've answered your question with two maybe opposing comments, but yes, eventually I believe that this will be a location for commercial. Whether now is the appropriate time, that's probably a judgment on the part of the commission.
The other question I have is the access to the property. It's not going to be accessed from Highway 82, is that correct?
We have been given a preliminary look at the site plan. We have not had a complete site plan submitted to us, and of course, these are comments that are probably going to be germane for the next item, preliminary plat, but we can talk about them together.
Okay. Let's talk about them together.
Sure. The access at this point, and Ms. Lewis may be able to address this, is not planned to come off 82, and as far as the city is concerned, that's a positive. We'd rather not see access or primary access off of 82, so it would be off of Golson Road. The question at this point is whether or not the lot is deep enough to facilitate that. There is a fairly wide right-of-way here for 82 primarily because there is, on somebody's long-range plan for the state, there is a plan to widen 82 to four lane. That project keeps slipping further and further out, but it is still in the state's books, and that's why the right-of-way is that deep. So while today, they may be a number of feedback from the intersection, when that road is completed at some point, they won't be very far from the intersection at all yet. So the depth of... Excuse me. The distance from the edge of the right-of-way where they will access Golson Road is important to us, and that's a concern that the engineering department has raised. I believe that can be worked out. Certainly will have to be at some point. Whether there's enough property laid out in this plat and in this zoning to accommodate that, I'm not sure because we're not... We haven't seen enough detail to that point. So I'm not sure whether they want to address that today, or it may require them to come back and ask for some kind of modification to this approval.
Okay. We can go ahead and... If we want to divide it up and vote on the changing it to B2 at this time, and then we will address those other issues?
Yes, sir. You can vote on both of these today. What I guess I'm saying is that it might be... And again, I have not had a conversation with Ms. Lewis about this. I know that they've talked to the city engineer about his concerns. I'm not sure if that's going to require additional property. If it is, it might be in everybody's interest to kind of stop this process at this point or hold it until that can be answered. Otherwise, you're going to end up coming back.
Okay. And mainly, it is the access in a... Another lane or what is the concern?
Well, the concern is the actual location. If we're looking at access off of Golson Road, that intersection or that access to the lot needs to be a certain distance away from the edge of 82.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Not the current center line, but what we project to be the center line in the future. Okay? So we're basically going from the edge of the right-of-way. That location needs to be far enough away that it meets the city's standards, and they can build the required turning lanes on Golson Road.
But that... Those are numbers that we do know.
Yes, they are numbers that have been shared with the applicant.
All right. So we don't... What we don't know is from the applicant, does this work?
Yes, that's correct. And frankly, I'm not sure that's a real problem for the rezoning. In fact, I don't think it is. It will... It may be for the preliminary plat. Of course, that can be adjusted at a later date. The zoning takes a good bit longer to adjust, and it means coming back before you and back before the council if they continue on. So again, I'm pointing this out. You need to get clarification from the applicant on that.
Okay. I guess I'm... Maybe I'm confused, but if we rezon the 2.7 acres, that's not enough.
Right.
So then we've got to start this process over.
They'll be adding an additional piece of property to that, yes.
So this is a... This is something we need to know now before we rezon to keep from having to do it again? Or... I mean, we can go ahead and let them do it, but I...
Do they want to come back again?
That's correct.
All right. And of course, I guess if they want to come back again, they can. It's no big deal.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah. Ms. Lewis, would you like to address this?
We've designed our site plan per the city requirements, and right now, our driveway is 230 feet from the highway, and the Public Works Manual only requires 125 feet. So we have taken that into account. If you're suggesting buying more property, that's not really an option, and that could kill the deal. So we've designed it to your standards. I mean, that's really... The driveway is where it's at right now because that's the way our truck can get in and out easily. If the driveway's pushed back any further close to the back boundary line, then our truck's not going to be able to get in and make its deliveries.
I understand, but if it doesn't meet some of the criteria that the engineer wishes for it to happen, you know, we... When it comes down to the... To looking at the site plan and examining it, we may have to come back and look at purchasing or relooking at this. Go ahead. I think, Ms. Lewis, what we are looking at is that the State of Alabama is improving the Highway 82, widening Highway 82, and we don't know how soon that's going to be. And I guess my question would be, did you take that into consideration when you... With this rezoning?
Well, when we go to find land to build, we definitely do our research.
Okay.
That's not what I do particularly, but we do that in office, so that... I don't know if that was... They knew that. They researched that, but I'm not sure if that... If they were told that. But that's one of the questions that's really important, so I'm not sure that they knew that. Do you know how much they're... Like, how far it's going to be when they widen the road?
No, I wouldn't know that answer. Mr. Duke, would you know the answer to that question as to which side of the road at Highway 82, or do they expand once they come through? We do know that they're going to expand, I think, all the way up to Tuscaloosa, I believe, at some point in time, and I just don't know when or how far.
Well, how far they widen the road, so it would change the...
Right. The widening would be on the south side in this location.
Okay.
And is that the right or left?
It depends on which side we're on, Mr. Hall. If we're headed out, it's going to be on the left side. The concern, and just to make sure I'm really clear on this, is not that we have a site plan that we've actually... Has been through the review process. We have a preliminary something that has been presented. What staff is saying at this point is it... And we would prefer to have the site plan. We would prefer to have had that in hand and reviewed it and taken care of that prior to this process. But we don't have that, so we're just making a note of caution. And if the applicant is okay with what they have laid out, they think that is adequate, then I would encourage you to take that issue off the table at this point and talk about the zoning and the plat, and if it has to come back up, it will.
All right. Yes, go ahead.
Go ahead. Go ahead. You have one.
Call for... Go ahead.
My main concern is always not going with the comprehensive plan because I know we put a lot of work into that. But looking at this, and when I first read this, I thought 100 and how many acres? 20-something acres? I thought, that's a lot of property. But looking at this, it does not look like a lot of it is readily buildable property, developable. It's not like there's a neighborhood that's going to be right behind this retail, right? Is that...
Mr. Chair, will you get everybody to come to the mic because we are recording and...
Yes, yes. Come on up here and speak in the mic.
On the corner where they're talking about putting this building, it's only about 35 acres because there's a road that separates the stuff on the right side of 47 and also the right side of 82. So when you talk about the property connected to where we're wanting to put in this store building, you're only talking about 35 total acres.
And it's got like some steep grades to it, isn't that correct?
Ma'am?
Doesn't it have some steep grades to it?
To follow up, I mean, you can take a bulldozer and do a lot of things. But, you know, we determined based on what we thought when we came before about the parking periods, and we thought two and a half acres was sufficient.
I'm not talking... I'm talking about the actual putting a retail in what the comprehensive plan has shown low-density residential. I'm just trying to say that this does not look like, according to the topography, that it's, you know, a neighborhood could be put there very easily.
Well, this house is built on Golson Road. Their own land is bad or worse than the land that you're talking about on the left side of County Road 47 where we're proposing to put this store building. And to address Mr. Gardner's issue about Highway 82, I'm 75 years old, and they've been going to do something to Highway 82 for 75 years. If y'all waiting to make a decision based on State of Alabama and the federal government to do something about that highway, then you know, all of y'all will be dead and buried before the federal government does anything about Highway 82. So I don't think that's an issue, Mr. Gardner.
It may not be an issue. However, it needs to be brought to point, make sure that we do an understanding because we got a new coach in Tuscaloosa, and he may have something to do with it, and we may just get it next week.
Well, all the folks that go to Birmingham and football game at Tuscaloosa, they go through Birmingham. They don't come through Prattville because they can go the interstate. But you and I can discuss that all day, but I think the preliminary plat that we showed to Mr. Duke was that it shows that the state right-of-way and this piece of property is outside the state right-of-way. So I don't know where the state right-of-way that y'all are questioning comes into effect on this question anyway because that preliminary plat, as I understand it, has a state right-of-way, and then behind the state right-of-way is the lot that we're talking about building this retail store.
All right. Well, we can... Thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Gentry?
May I just have a comment?
Yes, sir.
Like Marvin said, I've been here 40-something years, and every politician that's run public offices promised me faithfully they would four-lane that highway. Remind me of a story of two guys in University of Alabama going to Auburn, driving through Montgomery where the interstate is, and one says, my God, since when have they ever finished this interstate? The other guy says, not in my... Not in our lifetime. Voice from heaven said, not even in my lifetime. So don't worry about stopping this on County 82 being four-lane.
And the coach at Alabama will be dead for y'all four-lane.
Well, good to...
But I understand the road is there. It's already there. It's bought and it's paid for. It's there. It's not going to change.
All right. Let's put this to a vote. All in favor of the motion signify by raising your right hand. Rezon. Rezon. All right. Can we put the next one in, please? We got a... Actually, it's the preliminary plat. Can you... Is there a public hearing with us?
Yes.
Okay. We got a public hearing with the preliminary plat. Or did we combine the two public hearings? We didn't say we did. All right. The preliminary plat. We have a public hearing for the same piece of property for the preliminary plat. Anybody want to speak for or against? All right. Public hearing will be closed. Can you read it then for me, please?
You asked me to read it.
Yes, yes, please.
Resolution, preliminary plat, Gentry Plat 1, May 15, 2014, whereas Larry R. Gentry, Evelyn Rhodes, and Marvin Gentry are the owners of Gentry Properties, and whereas proposed development is located inside the city limits of the southeast corner of Highway 82 West and Golson Road, and whereas a public hearing for the purpose of development was heard on May 15, 2014, and whereas required city department head has reviewed and commented on proposed preliminary plat, now therefore be resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives it favorable review of the submitted preliminary plat of Gentry Plat 1.
Mr. Chairman, I so moved. Thank you. It's a second. All right. All right. Does, you have anything to add on this part? Petitioner. Joe?
Same comments as previous discussion.
The, I believe the staff report was, again, concern over excess getting into the the property from Golson Road?
Yes, sir, that is the main concern. And again, if that is something they feel like they can accommodate in the site plan and still meet city guidelines, then I would say that question is answered at this time.
Okay.
If need be, we'll come back.
All right. Is there any other discussion on this matter? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Let's go on, number four. Mr. Nelson, can you read number four? Oh, public hearing, my bad, I did not see that. Thank you for correcting me. R-two, single-family to R-three, single-family residential at the end of Honeysuckle Drive. Would anybody like to speak on this? Are you the petitioner?
I am the petitioner representative.
Okay, that is great.
All right, I'm Brian McRae, I'm Governor Mills of K-wood. I'm here representing Ms. Chambliss, asking for rezoning. This is currently represented as R-four going to R-three, or the other way around, excuse me? R-two to three.
R-two to R-three.
Yeah, it's on my board. With the intention of a new development with three connections to existing developments in the area. And unless there are any other questions, that's, you know, that's what we're asking for, for zoning.
All right. Mr. Duke, do you, I guess that's all we need on that one. Thank you, sir. Mr. Duke, do you have anything on this? It is. We did not, we did not, we did not, um...
Excuse me? Has the public got a yes or no on this? For what, can't we wait till we get this on?
We will.
For discussion, because it'd be discussed different times. And we made public hearing.
Okay, I got you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith, I'd be glad, just to fill in a few things that Mr. McBrayer did not may not have touched on. It's roughly twenty-four acres. This is located at the end of Honeysuckle Drive. And also at the end of Sunset Drive. Connects to the backside of Walthall Estates and Oakley Heights. The subdivision that's proposed, which is the sketch plan, which is the next item on your agenda after this, contains roughly eighty-eight lots, so the request to go from R-two to R-three is the zoning request which would increase the density over what's allowed at the moment. And so that's changing from a minimum of seventy-five-foot wide lots to a minimum of sixty-five, sixty-foot wide lots. And the lot size has changed from a minimum of seventy-five, excuse me, a minimum of ten thousand five hundred to seventy-five hundred. Be glad to answer any further questions at the end of the public hearing.
If the public has anything now, again. This is a public hearing, and both of them are members of the public, and they could speak. Come on up if you have any questions regarding this matter, and let the secretary record it. Sign in with the secretary, and then come up and tell us who you are and where you live, and all about it.
Mr. Chairman. I apologize, I thought the public hearing was over.
It was not. That's quite all right.
Please accept my apologies.
It is accepted.
Thank you.
My name is Jimmy Cherry. I live on Stonewall Drive.
Yes, sir.
And my concern is, I'm assuming we've not been informed. Is this going to be patio homes, apartments? What are we, R-two to R-three? I mean, it's your next agenda, so it's kind of like the previous one, it all bleeds together.
Yes, sir. You can talk.
So my concern is, the entrance on Sunset, if we're talking about apartments being built in there, we're talking about dumping a hundred-plus cars down Stonewall Drive every morning, because it's going to take them about five minutes to realize if they go down Honeysuckle out into Prattville, Montgomery, wherever, they're not going to go, because that's the school song. These people departing there in the mornings, it's going to take just that long, and I'm looking for Grand Central Station down Stonewall Drive.
R-four would be apartments. This would be going from, I believe, seventy-foot lots to sixty-foot lots, so it would be just cutting down the size of the lot and the size of the house by about ten feet.
Still single-family.
Still single-family houses, but it would just be condensed lots, smaller lots.
He said, the gentleman said, three exits out of there?
Yeah, there, yes, sir. From Sunset.
Honeysuckle.
And Dana, and...
George V.
George. All right.
Just the concern of the amount of traffic we're going to be dumping down Stonewall.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And then Stonewall, right there. Okay. Any other questions, comments, anything from the public at all? We got several folks. Great. We do need you to record yourself, and so please, you signed in. Excellent, you snuck by me, I apologize. Tell us who you are and where you live.
I am Robert W. Lloyd, and I live at eleven oh three Honeysuckle Drive. And my big concern is that if they go down, I understand that the apartments to be built or the homes to be built go straight down Honeysuckle Drive and then down into the woods down there. My concern is traffic. If any of you, I would invite you to come out and see the traffic that goes on because of the two school systems. And I live kitty-corner from the elementary school. And the traffic is so bad every day. Every morning, the traffic of the parents bringing their children to school, and then in the evening, the parents coming down there to pick up their children and take them home from school. And I invite all of you to go and take a look and see what the traffic goes on in every evening and every morning. Of course, a lot of the children are taken home by bus, but there are, I'd say, five, six hundred parents that go take their school there, take their kids to school, and then come and pick them up.
I have been one.
You've seen it. And I'm concerned, very concerned, with the traffic that's going to be involved with my house being kitty-corner from the elementary school. That's my big concern on it.
Thank you, sir. Who's next?
I'm James Walder. I live at seven oh seven Stonewall Drive. My concern is the traffic that will be coming on Stonewall Drive. It just won't be from those houses right in there on Honeysuckle. There's houses all back in there. You have two school systems in there. We're going to have parents bringing their kids to school, getting them at school. You're going to have everybody in that house, all the houses behind there be coming through there, because it'll be quicker to go through Stonewall than it will be to go by the schools, on the school zone in the morning and afternoon. And it will just devastate our neighborhood. We have a very quiet neighborhood. Nobody bothers anybody. We all look after each other, and then when you're going to have all that traffic coming through there, you will completely devastate that neighborhood, and I would just wonder, if it was y'all, would you want your neighborhood done that way? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is James Fuller. I live on the corner of Daniel Drive and Honeysuckle. And to me, this development would mean excessive traffic by the end of our house, some fifteen feet from our house, because projection of where the right-of-way is through there and our property line.
Yes, sir.
And it would be a lot of traffic from the apartments that are already currently there that would be going by our house every day, not to mention the impact it would have on Stonewall and the street down in there.
Okay. Yes, sir.
All right. My name is Kevin Carr. I'm actually a police officer here in Prattville.
Yes, sir.
My family live at one oh four Daniel Drive, so I'm here to kind of help represent them. Can we turn this around so they can see?
Yeah, absolutely. It is, it is you.
Obviously, the main concern that you've heard from everybody is that, obviously, traffic, because there's one way in, one way out, and you've got two schools. So, you know, four grades of children, which they've actually had to expand the schools because of the amount of children that we have. So you're looking at the traffic getting out or either coming in because the excessive amount of houses going in as well. So it's just a concern about not only traffic, but safety protection, as well as, you know, a lot of the, my family included, are getting older. And with that amount of traffic going through, it's just a concern.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'm George Goodwin with Goodwin Building, and we're obviously the ones that are interested in developing this property
Yes, sir.
and building the houses on these sixty-five-foot lots. You know, I can't really address the fact that, yes, there is traffic. I'm of the hopes that maybe this will help improve the traffic in the general area with the connection of all the streets that were originally put in. And I'm sure at the point in time when this neighborhood was developed, I don't know how many years ago, that the intent was for all these streets to interconnect and to have some sort of connection system that is lacking right now. But there again, we'd like to build, you know, some nice homes in there and connect the whole neighborhood the way it was originally intended.
Final question?
Yes, sir, ma'am.
And this might be a question for Mr. McBrayer, but the, if you go from two to three, the lots get smaller. Okay. How many additional houses are you going to be able to put in there because of the smaller lots? Ten?
It's hard to say. I'd say maybe ten to twelve. We didn't lay it out with the larger lots. You know, we laid it out anticipating being able to do sixty-five-foot lots that we've done, which, you know, the minimum in R-two would be sixty-foot, or in R-three would be sixty-feet. We've actually done sixty-five-foot lots, so we're not even really pushing the minimum there. But I will say, you know, traffic is a concern in that area. You know, I lived on Patrick Street for a couple of years, and it is rough. But it's rough for forty-five minutes twice a day. And this type of plan is in keeping with the city's conceptual master plan. You know, this is interconnectivity of the neighborhoods. As Mr. Goodwin alluded to, all the streets that we're connecting to are not cul-de-sacs. These were streets that were stubbed out and stopped at the woodline with intention of expansion in the future. And we feel like that's what we're doing, and that's in keeping with the purpose of this.
Any other questions?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I think, you know, as well as what Mayor says, you've got proposed eighty-eight lots, so if it had been R-two, it would have been seventy or seventy-five or something like that. Okay. All right. So it's my small change.
Thank you. Yes, sir, would you like to readdress it? Yeah, come on up, so you can speak in the microphone. Yeah, I understand, sir.
A concern maybe, in trying to work with the gentleman to do his lot, can we get a commitment from the city to put some speed brakes in Stonewall Drive?
I'll let the mayor address that.
A thought to add, because when they turn that corner on Stonewall Drive, head toward thirty-one, that's about five or six hundred yards there.
Yes, sir.
If we can get some speed brakes put in, maybe as a thought to slow these people down, because if there's nothing there to slow them down, it's not going to be good.
I don't know exactly what you're talking about, speed brakes, if you're talking about speed bumps.
Speed bumps.
The city really hasn't used speed bumps, but there are some other devices, speed tables and stuff, and that's something that the street committee has been looking at and working on in the policy, and we are trying to get something formulated, so that way, when we do have some challenges in various parts of the city, we can address those. And that's one reason I think this committee up here has, and it's been a very longstanding volunteer committee up here that has recognized how important it is to have well-designed and controlled streets, because if you have one that's very straight, it really creates some challenges with traffic. But anyway, that is being looked at. All the way around the city.
We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr., any other question? Mr. Duke? All right, one other. You mentioned your concern at the initial time of the, did you mention the density and the traffic, handling the traffic?
Yes, sir. I think I mentioned that you're changing density, and just to, looking at some of you that have been on the commission for a while recall that this was actually discussed in two thousand and five as a sketch plan. And it was discussed under the existing zoning of R-two. And the sketch plan that was looked at at that point showed sixty-two lots. And that really was the probably the, close to the maximum they could get in R-two, so you're looking at eighty-eight lots here. So there is, because of the lot size changes, going to be an increase in the number of lots allowable. To echo what Mr. Goodwin said, though, they are not building at the minimum. They're looking to build at sixty-five foot wide rather than the sixty that would be allowed in R-three. That said, if you change the zoning to R-three, then that, you're really always looking at what is the minimum. Because that will, once changed, become that which you can ask for by right, so. Anyway. Traffic, and since we're just kind of bleeding the zoning with the sketch plan...
Let's just go ahead and combine.
Traffic concern is that we need to have these streets interconnected. Two reasons. One, if we pick Honeysuckle or the Walthall Estates neighborhood that we were going to connect to only, then we would be exacerbating an existing problem with a cutoff neighborhood. And that is further exacerbated by the fact we have two schools located back-to-back. AM and PM traffic there is, well, as Mr. Smith alluded to, it is very difficult. And most of that is funneled along Honeysuckle. So providing a connection back out, we'll make some changes on Stonewall. There's a way, no way to really state that differently. There will be some traffic that will have access to Stonewall. How to gauge that at this point is difficult. What we have found over time is if you give drivers several options, then they will self-select. They will find the best route that works for them. And in the end, the system is better off because folks have those options. What we've tried to avoid over the years is creating one way in, one way out, both from an emergency management standpoint, which is Chief Johnson's major concern, but also from the standpoint of making life miserable for those folks on that one route. Okay, that, if you live on Honeysuckle, for instance, you catch all the traffic right now, no matter what. So you try to make allowances and create other pathways. If you look at the staff reports, you can see that there is a a good bit of property to the south of this location. And it's generally controlled by the same family that is offering this twenty-four acres for development. That property overall has connection, one connection back to thirty-one and... That property overall has connection, one connection back to thirty-one, and then eventually goes all the way to Doster Road. So, in the long term, we'll be looking at additional connections and ways out of this entire area. It's already been discussed at this podium today that, you know, planning has a long time horizon, so we're not talking about necessarily tomorrow, but in the end, we'll eventually be looking at connections to the south in this plan, which will also line up with the end of Linda, excuse me, Linda Drive, for instance, that was also stubbed out in the Avenue Estates neighborhood. So, there are connections that will be made beyond what we see here today. As far as the density is concerned and the change to R3, that is certainly supported by the city's comprehensive plan. We're still talking about single-family residential. And I apologize, we identified in the staff report that as being low-density is actually a mixed-use residential that is envisioned for this area. So, again, that's not a material change. What we're talking about from R2 to R3 is certainly permissible by the city's comprehensive plan. We're still talking about single-family residential regardless.
Thank you, Mr. Duke. Any other questions for Mr. Duke?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Duke, do we have any R3 in that area already? Or is this the first?
This will be the first in this area. Mr. Nelson, I will tell you that if we were to take snapshots of development at different points in time throughout the city, you would see that lot sizes have been getting progressively smaller. That, those lot sizes getting smaller have not led to smaller houses. They, house sizes generally have stayed relatively the same, while lot sizes have gotten smaller. That's the way the market has moved over time. I don't think we'll ever get back to the ninety-foot-wide lots unless it's some kind of high-end housing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Duke.
Thank you.
Have we closed the public hearing?
Not yet, I don't think so.
I apologize.
I believe you have some other.
We do have some more people, okay. Yeah, come on up, and have you registered yourself? Okay, I hide behind that phone.
My name is Virginia Beck. I want to know, Honeysuckle dead ends, it does not connect to Sunset. Where are you going to put the street that's going to connect to Honeysuckle?
Under Platte, Honeysuckle is going to be at the top of, I believe Platte One will be that road right there. Platte Three? Yeah, Platte Three. Yeah. So. Anybody else want to address us? Any other comments? Well, we'll close the public hearing. Did you want, I saw something move, okay. I guess we need to close it and read this in. This is number five? Number four. Number four. Mayor, would you read the number four in for me? We've got a lot of them today.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Resolution rezoning request, R2 to R3, end of Honeysuckle Drive, Melanie Chambliss, petitioner of May fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Whereas Melanie Chambliss, on behalf of the Prattville Development Group, has applied for rezoning of the property in attachment A and shown in attachment B. Whereas the property to be rezoned is located inside the city limits on the south end of Honeysuckle Drive and the west end of Sunset Drive, whereas petitioner wishes to rezone the property from R2, single-family residential, to R, single, R3, single-family residential, whereas a public hearing on the proposed zoning was held by the Prattville Planning Commission on May fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby recommends rezoning of said property from R2 to R3.
Second. Thank you. Any other discussion on this matter?
Might get Mr. Duke to mention the whole procedure of rezoning, timewise.
All right, Mr. Duke?
Be glad to, this will also apply to the other rezoning that was on the agenda today. Again, y'all are, where rezonings are concerned, the planning commission is acting in advisory capacity. So, today you've had a public hearing and consideration of this matter, you will be making a recommendation to the city council. The city council will receive your recommendation regardless of its nature, and then they will schedule a public hearing, and that notice will be in the newspaper, and they will hold that public hearing and then consider this matter. This, if this comes out of the planning commission today, then it will appear on the council's agenda for the first meeting in June, which is June the third. At that time, they'll set the hearing, they'll read it for the first time. There will be no action at all other than to set the public hearing, and then the first meeting in July, which will be the first week of July. I apologize, I don't have that date, but we'll get that. They will then have a public hearing and consider the matter. That will actually be July the first. So, this matter, if passed out of planning commission today, will appear for public hearing on the council agenda on July the first. And that's at six P.M.
Thank you. Now, you mentioned by right a couple of times, and by right simply means that the zoning, if it is R, whether it's R2 or R3, if it stays R2, they have by right to build something there regardless.
Yes, sir, from a land use perspective, they, that is an allowed use, meaning that it doesn't have to come back before you or the city council to change the zoning. There are certain uses that are allowed by right. Single-family is the predominant one, of course. There are public and semi-public uses that are allowed, but they're not, those users are not going to find themselves this deep in a neighborhood.
And by changing from R2 to R3, we are adding, again, we're saying we're adding approximately ten houses somewhere in that. Twenty-six. Or well with the sixty-five-foot lots, right?
Right.
Possible twenty-six, if I may say.
Yeah. Mr. Smith, make sure my comparison was between a sketch plan that you had in two thousand and five and the present one.
Okay.
But it's roughly fifteen to twenty or so lots that they could add because of the density changes.
Fifteen to twenty, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just, and just glancing at it, that means that in this whole neighborhood, there's going to be three hundred houses instead of two hundred and eighty. Something in that neighborhood.
Yes.
I mean, there's already two hundred houses in there, served by one single in and out, pretty much, so.
And then it would all interconnect.
Yep.
Yes.
Make sure, Mr. Duke, all these streets that are serving as the connection points for this new development, they are stubbed-out streets. They're not cul-de-sacs, we're turning into streets, or, you know, they were, you know, supposed to go somewhere.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct, Ms. Carpenter. These are not, none of the streets that you're referencing are currently cul-de-sacs. Sunset is a dead end stubbed out. Honeysuckle is a dead end stubbed out. Street named George Drive, which most people won't know because there are no houses on it currently or addressed off of it, but it is stubbed out off of Lawrence Street. So, all of those were intended to connect at some later date.
Okay. Well, let's vote on it. Are we ready? All in favor of the motion? Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Just a comment, I was in my district when I was on the council, that area back down there. Now, this notification was made in, what, five hundred feet, yards, what is it, Joe? Five hundred? The people this is affecting, probably say the most, never got any notification out except through normal channels. I have a lot of people have talked to me in that district. And if they had been sent a letter to them, just if, they would be standing room only in favor of this, because they've been at a risk of horrendous accidents in there, not being able to get an ambulance in for a heart attack, recs, whatever, because it went a way in, went a way out. Now, we've got to take consideration, other people's feelings, whereas you folks here, which I certainly sympathize with you on a lot of traffic, but traffic cannot be really used as a reason for not developing. And I've known, I lived all over the state of Alabama when I worked, if I may please, I've seen speed bumps taken out of streets after the first month they were put in. I lived, I moved nine times in ten years. I've lived in most metropolitan ends of the state of Alabama. Speed bumps will not stay in the residential area, because you'll have somebody waking at four o'clock in the morning and raising heck because of the speed bumps. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All those in favor of the motion signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, light sign. Okay. Let's go with the next one. Rezoning, let's see here. Midtown, number five. We had a public hearing on this with the other one. And so, now we got Midtown, all right. Midtown, sketch plan, Midtown Oaks subdivision, May fifteen, two thousand and fourteen. Whereas Goodwin Builders, Inc., has presented a sketch plan of Midtown Oaks for consideration by the planning commission, and whereas the proposed development is located inside the city limits on the south end of Honeysuckle Drive and the west end of Sunset Drive, and whereas the required city department heads have reviewed and commented on the proposed sketch plan, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of the submitted sketch plan of Midtown Oaks subdivision.
I've got to interrupt for one moment.
Yes.
There's actually been a small revision to the sketch plan based on the comments from planning department.
Okay.
You may want to discuss that, just to make sure you know, you know, because we would like to have it approved as shown here, not necessarily the map that you've got there.
We will do that.
I have made the motion that this resolution with the revisions that are presented to the planning be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, is there a discussion on this matter? What's being changed, so we can get that with Mr. Nelson?
Get closer so you can hear me here. The small revision, planning department asked us to make the connection, the extension of Honeysuckle. This was originally connected here, and this was dead end, so we've made this connection here. They also mentioned that they would like to phase it in a different manner, and do one here and two here. Our best chance for success in this and ever having that interconnection is to start on this end, and that's what we would like to pursue.
All right, any other questions? Discussion, vote? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand? All opposed, light sign? Okay.
Mr. Smith, this is your. Well, it's all right, I'm just a little confused. We had a motion to accept it as submitted, and then Mr. McCauley.
I made, he read it, so I made the motion to accept as submitted and corrected.
Yes. I just want to read it in, because I've.
And I appreciate it very much, I'm just, wasn't sure I'd heard that correctly, so thank you.
I made people read all the time, so. Mr. Nelson, will you read the next, number six? There's a public hearing, how about that? Pig Enterprises, Platte One, eleven eighty-three South Memorial Drive, Pig Enterprises LLC. Is there anyone that wants to speak for or against this? Hi.
There's somebody.
I'm Jessica Pig, I'm speaking today on behalf of the owner, John Pig. We have just moved the property line, the plans were submitted to George with the planning department, but I do have a copy here today if you need to see it. The original property line, there are three connecting lots, A, B, and C. The original property line was just moved north of the building, so that the building on Lot B would sit on one single lot. David, with the Prattville Planning Surveying Department, he's the one who did it, and here are a copy of the plans, if you all have not seen.
I think we have. We have, thank you.
The line in question is the one labeled abandoned line on Platte B.
Ms. Pig, I want to just see if anybody wants to speak for or against in the public. Does anybody have any comments, questions for or against? The public hearing is closed, now the petitioner may speak, and that is you, so if you have anything else. Oh, we got to read it in, I got it, I got it. Now, Mr. Nelson, you can read it in.
Resolution preliminary Platte, Pig Enterprises, Platte One, May fifteen, two thousand and fourteen. Whereas Pig Enterprises LLC is the owner of the Pig Enterprises Platte One property, and whereas the proposed development is located inside the city limits at eleven eighty-three South Memorial Drive, and whereas a public hearing for the proposed development was heard on May the fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, and whereas the required city department heads have reviewed and commented on the proposed preliminary plat. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of the submitted preliminary plat of Pig Enterprises, Platte One. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Here's a motion. All right, petitioner, and you have commented on it? Any other questions for the petitioner?
No.
Anything? Yeah. Anything?
You did, yes, sir. This is a clarification of a lot line. If this had been previously platted property, it would be just a simple replat, but this property never having been platted, we're doing preliminary final.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand? All opposed, light sign? All right, thank you, Ms. Pig. All right, and let's see here. Number seven. Another Pig Enterprises. Chief, will you read that one in for me, number?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chief.
Resolution final Platte, Pig Enterprises, Pratt One, May fifteen, two thousand and fourteen, whereas Pig Enterprises LLC is the owner of the Pig Enterprises Platte One property, and whereas the proposed development is located inside the city limits at eleven eighty-three South Memorial Drive, and whereas a preliminary plat for the proposed development was approved on May fifteen, two thousand and fourteen, and whereas the required city department heads have reviewed and commented on the proposed final plat, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of the submitted final plat of Pig Enterprises, Platte One, I so move.
Second.
Second. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand? All right, let's move on to the next one. Number eight. Uh, number eight. Uh, Mr. Mr. Hall, have you read anything in today? Or we got a, no public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
You go with the final plat, Pig Enterprises, Plat One?
Uh, we got, next one, number eight. Number, um, number eight.
Oh, number eight.
Number, yeah, 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 number, number eight.
That's Glen, Glenbrook, right?
Yes, sir.
Where did he play from? All right, one go.
Whereas Stone Martin Builders is the developer of Glenbrook subdivision, Plat Three, and whereas the proposed development is located inside the city limits of Pendlebrook Drive and Berkeley Street, and whereas the preliminary plat of this proposed development was approved on August fifteenth, twenty thirteen, and whereas the city department heads have reviewed and commented on the proposed development, and therefore it be resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of the submitted final plat of Glenbrook subdivision, Plat Three B. Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt this resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Signify by raising your right hand.
We'll discuss it.
She gets it done. I know you want to get out of here.
You suffer, ready?
All right, discussion.
I mean, I'm waiting, waiting, come on, wait a moment, without hearing.
All right.
Y'all, y'all, y'all have to give Mr. Rice a hard time occasionally.
Yeah. I, I thought you said that everybody reviewed it and was good with it. Has everybody reviewed it?
That is correct, just to speed this along, this subdivision is substantially complete. We recommend approval, yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
You don't have anything to say?
I played the Smokey.
All in favor? Signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Number nine. I guess this is a clearing up a lot line. And so we, uh, we have a lot line moved, it's a replat of Guardian Credit Union, Plat One, uh, on East Main Street of Prattville East Shopping Center. Um, that's on east...
Right in front of, uh, old CVS, next door to Burger King.
Next door to Burger King, next to old CVS. I did not even know that was there.
Get in the building, yeah.
Go ahead.
Do you want me to?
Absolutely.
Hey, I'm Kenneth White, Jr., uh, with Flowers and White Engineering. I'm representing the applicant, um, Florida Concepts, my client, the owner of the property's Aaronoff's right now. Um, we're simply replating, we're carving out a lot from an existing plat, uh, for the purpose of a financial institution, um, Credit Union, excuse me, and, uh, you're right, it's right to the west of the side is Burger King, that's on the south side of, uh, East Main Street. Uh, the east property line is right there at the entrance of the shopping center. Um, I can entertain any questions, if y'all have any.
So it's by Burger King, and it's carving out some of the parking lot of...
Correct.
What, is it the...
It's just a parking lot now, we're planning on this demo on the parking lot, should y'all approve this and we move on. We're, we're in the due diligence stage right now.
All right.
Couldn't convince you to buy the bank across the street? I'm teasing, none of my business. I'm teasing. None of my business, I'm just thinking, yes.
All?
It's going to be pretty.
Is there any discussion? All right, we will see what, Mr. Duke. Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Duke, do you have any comments?
Yes, sir, I have one, and, and that is only asking that you bank this approval, um, conditional that, uh, staff be allowed to adjust the lines within reason, uh, once the, the site plan has been reviewed. Um, if you look at what they have laid out there, we believe that is sufficient, however, just like with the, um, the discount store that we were talking about earlier, we have not looked at a, a site plan, and there may be some need to, to move that one way or the other, although I'm sure they hope not. Um, and, and we do too, we think we, it probably got something laid out here that works. So, um, just with that caveat, that's all. Other than that, this is a, a good use for an area that is, in my opinion, excess parking. Uh, if you recall, if you've been on the commission a while, we did the same thing with the old Food World, Walmart, shopping center, which gave you Zaxby's, Brewster's, uh, O'Reilly Auto Parts, so...
Okay. Any comments? Yeah?
I'm talking for the Florida Concepts, and I've had conversations with Joel on the site plan.
God, yeah, there's people that are listening on the internet.
Yeah, yeah, on the site plan. Um, we have given them a preliminary site plan, and I met with Joel yesterday on it, and our concern is not changing the property lines, as they're shown here. This is what we negotiated with Aaronoff Development, this is what has been, the title work has been done on. We're going to readjust our site plan, not the lot lines. I just want to make that clear. It's, it took us too long to get to this point to have this piece of property to buy, and I don't want to go back to Aaronoff and start from scratch.
And perfectly.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the adjusted lot line per the proposal.
I second. Per, per city?
Yeah.
Per proposal, okay. All right.
I second, Mr. Chairman.
There's been a motion to second, are we good, Mr. Nelson? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, is there anything miscellaneous or anything new business that anybody wants to bring in? Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, you have one thing.
Oh, do we? Adjourned it, but we'll talk, go ahead.
Couple of things, if I could, real quick.
Yes, sir. I'll reopen.
I, I would not have seen this meeting going this long, but, uh, anyway, your patience, just a second. The, uh, the city applied for a community development block grant, uh, last year to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs to do a planning study, and that is a, a follow-on to what we had already expected to do based on the twenty-ten Conference of Plan. Um, that planning study is, as I may have mentioned, is for the College Heights area, uh, along Martin Luther King Drive. Uh, we have, uh, sent out requests for qualifications, received qualifications back from five firms which are well-qualified. Uh, we will be selecting someone soon, I just want to make you aware of that. Hopefully the Planning Commission will see fit to be involved with that, uh, we will keep you well-informed about meetings and times, and eventually that, whatever comes out of that will be expected to be adopted as an amendment to the Conference of Plan, okay? Uh, as you know, if you've been a part of this for a while, the Conference of Plan can be amended in pieces, it can be amended in whole, so as we come up with a more complete study of a neighborhood such as College Heights, we want to make sure we adopt that as the, as the plan. Um, there, there are a lot of opportunities in this area, as you may have heard, the city's looking at removing the old Gurnee Building there off of Ridgewood, that is right in the middle of the study area. Uh, the, the open land there that the city owns, approximately two hundred acres, uh, has the ability to make connections between several different neighborhoods. So, uh, this will be a, a very good study, will have a high public input component, just like the Conference of Plan. So, uh, I do have one slot, if somebody's interested in reviewing these statements of qualifications, I need somebody to possibly help, uh, sift through and read them, if, if that suits you, you'd be more than, have, more than welcome, if not, I might draft one of you. But, uh, the other item is, is, uh, kind of educational. Um, it occurred to me several weeks ago that we have had, at least in my staff report, more than one occasion, talked about the wastewater system and the adequacy of the system for, uh, accepting current and future development. And I think it would be helpful, given some of the studies we have underway at the moment, to, um, to meet with the wastewater department head, and some of his staff, and some of their consultants, to talk about, uh, long range, talk about present issues, and talk about, uh, long-range plans for the system. Uh, I think that would give you some insight. First of all, if you've never learned about wastewater, um, once you get past the O factor, you know, it'll, it's quite interesting, really, uh, but I, I think it's, it's beneficial for this body to, to get that immersion, so to speak, to understand what we're, what we're talking about. Um, no hurry on that, I think sometime probably July, uh, is a good time.
It's going to be hotter, you're going to have a field trip.
Absolutely.
In July, you want?
Want to be real close to the digester in July, that's...
That's right.
Free samples are available?
I, I heard rumors that a, uh, somebody touring the plant offered to take a, a drink of the clean effluent, which is the, the water that is, comes out of the other end of the plant. Uh, it meets A D M standards, but I don't know that I call it clean, so, uh...
I had a report today that he actually did it twice. Nobody has seen or heard of him lately, but he is doing...
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, sir, you may.
This is just a suggestion now.
Yes, sir.
And it might be that, you know, public hearings like we had today...
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Duke, you said you could have presented there to start with.
Mm-hmm.
Right at the beginning, then all these other things, like, it would, it would enlighten them on some questions they would want to ask, rather than having, I, what we had was two public hearings on one thing.
Yeah.
That's my suggestion.
Yes, sir.
Whatever's worth.
I think they would have probably said the same thing, despite the fact that we've said several times that we, we really were only adding a couple of houses, and the fact that they already had the right to build it. Yeah, I don't know, but I agree with, I will...
I'm not going to give you a thought.
Yeah.
Mr. Smith, I, I'm going to agree with Mr. Hall to some extent, and tell you that one of the things we're proposing is, uh, to start providing kind of a, let's call it a cheat sheet, that is available basically the back of the agenda when folks come in. If you have a rezoning, I think it's important that folks know how many lots, how many acres, and, um, either we need to make sure we pull that out of the applicant, because both of them today got up here and, and said, you know, here's what we're presenting, and, uh, this is, you know, this is what we want you to do, but they didn't provide any really background. So, folks coming to the public hearing, uh, they, they're looking for that kind of information, they...
Right. I think it, it was helpful for ye to come up and, and speak on them, on the matter, and perhaps if we can do that at public hearing, so they know what's, but the cheat sheet would work too.
Yes, sir, I think...
And I did like the way it worked, and sorry for the confusion on that.
What I saw, Mr. Duke, that, uh, it was proposed sixty-two lots, and they wanted eighty-eight, and the difference between the two is twenty-six lots, and it's not ten or twelve, even though they said that we can increase the size of the lot. And they, R three, they can, uh, the R three don't have to be a sixty-foot, it could be a seventy, or sixty-five, or seventy, all seventy-five, or eighty, for that matter, depends on if you buy two lots. But we do know the minimum is sixty, and that's what we're going to have to base our, that's what I based my decision on, was at sixty, because once it's in right, reduce the print, that's what it is, whether he say sixty-five or seventy, makes no difference.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I, I, Mr. Governor, I completely agree with you in that that's the way y'all need to consider rezonings, is, is you're looking at, when it's uses, you're looking at anything that's allowed in that district, when it's minimum lot size, that you're looking at, at that. I, in, in this case, I think that the Planning Commission be well within its, let, let's say that they showed up with a preliminary plat, or sixty, sixty-foot wide lots instead of sixty-five, I think it'd be well within y'all's purview to say, you know, what's the reason for the change, you know, we're not going to approve that. I think, you know, because it's been presented to you that that's the plan, and that was essentially how the, the zoning was sold to you. So, I, I think you, you still have another chance to check that if something were to happen. But if, if someone was, so we're standing here with you with just a, hey, we want to rezone this piece of property, and they didn't have a, a sketch plan with it, then you really have to be wary of that. If there's some, you know, we, we think we're going to do sixty-five-foot wide lots, or something of that nature, but having a sketch plan with it, and that's one of the reasons we have, have, over time, tried to tie the zoning and the sketch together, is because it kind of locks that in a little bit. So, but you're absolutely correct, that when you approve that R three, you're, you're looking at minimums and not necessarily what's presented.
I'm waiting for the, I'm waiting for the owners of the other property coming on and deals and big apartments back there and running through this subdivision, like it's happened before.
We have anything else?
Mr. Smith, we'll try to get some dates to members for a possible work session, and coordinate that with wastewater, if that's okay.
That'd be fine.
Thank you.
There's a good bit of difference in you, R two and your R three.
Yes, sir.
Your R, R two is ten thousand five hundred square feet. Your R three is seventy-five hundred, seven thousand five hundred feet.
Right.
And your setbacks is so different, ten-foot R two, and the R three is eight on one side and six on the other. All right, y'all can hear me. I'm talking loud enough, I thought.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. That's one thing we really need to do, because I watch this when I go back on my computer.
Yes, sir.
And when somebody gets away from his mic, I, I was listening to two of these going on, and you couldn't hear nobody. Everybody was talking, uh, coming on, but nobody would get, you knew, nobody was in the mic.
Yes, sir.
You really, really need to, we would need to watch that and be sure we turn these mics.